Good evening, we'll call to order the Wairika City Council meeting, close session for February 6, 2024. It is 5:30. Do you have any public comment, audience? No, anybody online? All right, I will close the public comment and we'll go into closed session. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wairika City Council for February 6, 2024. Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance. Just want to remind all our audience members to please silence their cell phones. And we did have closed session meeting this evening and we do not have any reportable action tonight. Very great. So we'll move on to item number five. This is the special presentations and/or announcements. This time slot is for informational presentations, appointments and/or awards presented by the city council or to the city council. This is the Red Scarf Society mission statement, celebration of 20 years announcement of the 2024 concert series. And Joan Fabro is going to be speaking to us this evening. Good evening.
Have a slide presentation, so.
Okay, great.
Wait, first of all, I'd like to introduce my volunteers that are here tonight. Ann Castor is our treasurer. Man's in the front row. In the back row is Judy Washington. She's our vice president. There is Suzanne Rosita. She's our secretary. Sandy Johnson does our program. Duela is our musician and she can come up with any material we need. And John Michael is our Facebook person. And Jerry is our photographer and she also does our scrapbook. And I'll have a little comment to make in my presentation. Oh, I forgot you. And there's my husband in the front row. He is my. He is, yeah. He is my consultant. He's always telling me what to do and it really doesn't matter. That's great. Okay. All right. This is our. Oh gosh, it records me there also too. Whatever I say, I didn't know that. Oh my gosh. Okay, first slide please. Brief history of the theater. The Wairika Community Theater was completed in October 1976 after much community fundraising and support. In early December 1975, the lowest bid was received on the bare bones specification of the theater. They had to cut several things and they just couldn't cut anymore. So this still exceeded the federal grant by $33,000. And Jim Ekman called Audrey Tyler, and you remember Audrey, how convincing she was. She was told she had to get $33,000 and it had to be done in one week. She got her people together and in one week, they were able to raise $35,000 of pledges. And most of these pledges were honored. So the theater could go on. Soon after, the theater was dedicated in October 1976 and a guild was formed. Soon after, Bob Marshall was selected to manage the theater and bring productions to Wairika. That was really popular. He did great things with productions. Yeah, the guild folded in early 1990s. Second slide please. Birth of Red Scarf and the restoration of the piano. My husband and I had become acquainted with Yossik Mazinski, a young Polish pianist that wanted to attend Juilliard of Music in New York City. He was brought over from Poland by music of the mountain and grass valley area to perform in the summer. He was 18 years old and a student at the Chopin Piano Institute in Warsaw, Poland. While sailing on Lake Tahoe with friends, he needed a piano to practice on and we had a piano at the cabin. So he, at that time, my husband was associated with the Lake Tahoe Music Festival and the Mural Quartet. Graduates of Juilliard were staying with us while they performed for the Lake Tahoe Music Festival. They heard Yossik play and said, you cannot let Yossik return to Poland. He will just deteriorate. So they can, with their connection with Juilliard, they phoned Jerry Lowenthal, the head piano division at Juilliard and scheduled an audition with Jerry and Yossik. Yossik received a scholarship to Juilliard. When Yossik came to spend Christmas with us, there were several friends and the community wanted to hear him play. So we had to have a benefit project. The project was to restore the 1942 Baldwin Model D Concert Grand Piano that was given to the city when the community concert folded. Members in the community had purchased this piano by buying in keys and octaves. After two concerts, we were able to have funds to refinish the piano. The piano frame was refinished, keyboard and harp restored and the strings replaced. Several community members came to us as a group and wanted music programs in the theater and community. Thus, the formation of the Red Scarf Society for Performing Arts. Why was the guild called Red Scarf? This was a time when women were knitting and hen knit scarves were in vogue. Knitted red scarves were a hit in New York City. So the group decided to name the organization the Red Scarf Society for the Performing Arts. The scarf would provide easy, fun and attractive recognition. The name was not exactly agreed upon by everyone in the group because they were sure the Red Scarf Society would get mixed up with the Red Hat Society. And that certainly has been the case. Where the Red Hat Society is a social group and the Red Scarf Society is a functioning group. Mission statement, please. Next slide. The objectives and purpose of the Red Scarf Society for the Performing Arts are to enhance the cultural life and promote arts in the communities of Siskiyou County. To serve as a support group for the Wairika Community Theater, which is owned by the city of Wairika. And to provide educational and music outreach to students in Siskiyou County schools. Red Scarf is a 501(c)(3) organization that is completely volunteer. Later, Red Scarf Incorporated. At the beginning, Red Scarf started with about 25 members or more and currently there's 12 of us active members. The community has been very supportive of our efforts by attending concerts, sponsoring concerts and donating to Red Scarf Society. Our revenue from ticket sales only covers about a third to half of our costs. I don't know, but when you contract with these musicians, you have to put them up. Usually it's two nights in Wairika. They want their own rooms. They would really like to have three-star hotel rooms. And there's no three-star hotel rooms in Wairika. There's just two-star and lower. So you have to explain that. Also, you have to feed them. And they have also requirements. Usually they want back in the green room. They want, well, a couple of them want beer. But they always want fruit or something beforehand. So it becomes expensive for us. The cost of the musician is just part of it. Yeah. Projects Red Scarf has completed at Wairika Community Theater. In 2006, Red Scarf received a grant from the Norris Foundation for $10,000. And from grant monies obtained by the city, we were able to update the sound system at the theater by buying speakers and a soundboard. Steve Leo installed the system. Next slide please. The Boulder Project and Haiku, Voices of the Siskus. Red Scarf received two grants from the Community Foundation for arts in the community. This was money given to the Community Foundation by the James Irvine Foundation that encouraged Community Foundation of the North State, the old Shasta Regional Community Foundation, to grant out monies to communities for art projects in the community. So we were able to win this win this art grant and it was for a haiku contest. And I don't know if you know what haiku is. With haiku, there is no more than 17 syllables in the poem. It's a Japanese poem. Haiku is composed of only three lines. The first line has five syllables, the second line has seven syllables and the third line has five syllables. So Suzanne Rosita, I have a poem that you wrote to get this started. Rusty Picks and Pans, five syllables. Unearth the Dream of Miners, seven syllables. The Harvest of Gold, five syllables. This was written by Suzanne as an example for our contest. We ended up with 940 haikus. It was unbelievable. They were students. They were adults. They could enter more than one time. So out of these, we chose 10 different 10 different haikus and they had to be in the areas of artists, Chinese explorers, trappers, gold miners, Native Americans, pioneers, providers, which are farmers, ranchers and cowboys, railroaders, timberworks and of course, women. So 10 haikus were selected and they are, Ralph Sterrett came and etched the haikus into boulders. And they lined the walkway of the theater. And if you want to know about the haikus, there is a plaque that we have done that lists the the item, the person that did the haiku and what the haiku was, yeah. Was about. So you can go up there and read along and then look at the look at the, the little board we have between, between the theaters. Well, that was only part of the, the project. We had to landscape. So you can see the city was really good in allowing us to move boulders in. Shea Construction out in Montague donated boulders and the city crew, you can see they're quite large, moved the boulders here. You can see on the pictures here where the boulders were moved. We also took out some of the lawn. Next slide please. You can see removing the lawn. The lawn didn't go thrown away. It went out to Hibbert Field and they were able to, to use it. And then at the end, you can see the girls planting. We had to do plants. We had actually the landscape project, we had a contest. Only two landscapers' plans were submitted. We used ideas from both plans and so we gave the prize half to each of the participants that entered. Next slide please. Siding project at the theater. In 2011, we probably started this. And you could see that the siding was coming off. It was flying off. It had been stapled and mailed. The west side was particularly terrible because it got all the sun, but they had replaced some siding on the east side. But it wasn't of a very good quality and the sprinklers were hit it. It was also crumbling. So we took on the job of trying to raise money to re-side the theater. So we were able to get grants from the Ford Foundation, from the Norris Foundation, from Scott Valley Bank, from US Bank, from also the Lope Foundation gave us some money. We were, Red Scarf put in 25,000. We were able to raise over 26,000 in the community. So the project we thought would be 162,000, but it ended up, they forgot the, forgot the foyer. And they had to add that plus some extras. So the whole project came to around 190,000. So we paid for about 60% of our funds and the city took up the rest, but we were able to re-side the theater. Charlie Gellingham did, was our volunteer. It came up what siding we would use. And he volunteered many hours to look into this. The city took it over and they hired BK Construction Brian Kishi and Nick Senat with his design around the project. And finally, in the spring of 2015, it was finished. And there's a picture of Judy with Steve. It was Steve and Brian Kishi. Next slide please. This is some more of the project. They had to get, it was quite high. We tried to keep the linear aspect of the, of the theater because it had very nice architectural linear aspect. And we did that by using hardy board and slats. Also, the city of Wairika recognized this and we were given a plaque. That is a sliding plaque. Next slide please. Other projects. Red Scarf wrote and was awarded a grant from Community Foundation of the North State, which is the old Shasta Regional. About four years ago, the name was changed to Community Foundation of the North State, but both of them are the same. When they went into Tahama County, Tahama County didn't like Shasta Regional. So there was a plan. Some of us voted against it because we still thought it should be Shasta Regional Community Foundation. I served on the board for eight years and we were not in favor of changing the name, but, but many, it won. And so they changed the name. So we wrote a grant for the acoustic baffles that were used behind the risers for wires and to project sound. Carl Greiner gave us a list of what he needed at the theater and we paid for some shure microphones for the theater. Rich Rangles came to us and he said, you have beautiful posters. Why don't you do something with them? So we have 10 picture frames with posters in them. But unfortunately, we went up there the other day and we have to think of some other way to hang them because the little hangers that they're on, we didn't want to do any kind of nails in the wall. They have, the posters, the frames have fallen. So we'll be getting back. And there's 10 different posters that are in the lobby and are in the hallway. So we hope to get that accomplished. There was letters identifying the building. We bought those and Ken Polley put them up and we suggested instead of putting them to the right side where the O letters were, the O letters were made of wood and they just crumbled. So we had put them across the fascia of the beam by the front door. Unfortunately, that beam is in terrible shape and it has to be scraped and the leathers were taken off, but they should go up hopefully when the roof goes on and the HVAC comes in. We, there's a couple of us that wrote a grant for the roof. Matt Bray helped us with some of the stats and I wrote the grant. Kim helped clean it up. And we presented it to the city because we didn't want that going into our coffers. We wanted, it was a great grant for a city building. So we submitted the grant and we won two years ago, $100,000 to do the roof from the Norris Foundation, plus the Red Scarf gave $5,000, which is just a token, but we, we thought that was very important to have that done. Next slide please. We also purchased new furniture for the lobby. The furniture in the green room was terrible. It was the original furniture that came with the building. And Judy, thank goodness, would bring her green sheets. And she lined the green room with her green sheets. So that, because the furniture was so dirty. So we decided that we had to do something. So we took the furniture that was in the lobby and moved it in the green room. And we purchased two couches and one chair. And this is the furniture in the lobby, the new furniture in the lobby. Mr. Harms gave us a good deal. So that was before he sold out. So next slide please. Okay, workdays at the theater. Over the years, we've had workdays at the theater. We painted the bathrooms and we did cleanup day usually in April on a Saturday. Unfortunately, a lot of our members are gone now. And we haven't continued the workdays, but we have one person that has moved from her house, which she enjoyed gardening. And now she's living in an apartment house and I think we need to recognize her. She misses gardening. So she goes up to the theater and spends time weeding and trimming and cleaning up. And I'd like to recognize Jerry Kramer. So if you see Jerry working up there, she told me this week that she was gonna, she wanted to get the the center planer done because she's going out of town and she didn't want to wait until she came home. And springtime is coming one of these days and she had to get it done. Thank you, Jerry. Next slide please. Outreach in the schools. This is a very, Kim Presley manages this department for us. And we're so lucky in Wairika because we have Eric Seiler at the high school and we have Dawn Orser with the Jackson Street School. And they have great music programs, but, and South County does have good music programs. But these feeder schools do not have any music programs. Scott Valley does not have a music program. So we, if we have a performer coming, we will back to back take them to some of these schools. The picture is take three and this was a very dynamic group of the violin, cello and piano. And we went out to Little Shasta School. And we were just dumbfounded that they gave away their piano. And the only music they have there is Melanie Seiler comes in and gives a week of instruction out in Little Shasta. The second picture is a picture we had last Friday. This was a young man that is a pianist and plays ragtime. He came from Durango, Colorado. He was terrific. He was terrific with the students. He kind of gave them a history of ragtime from the start of Scott Joplin on up to the day. And I don't know how he did it, but he could put his, when he played Hold That Tiger, he would put his elbow on the piano and make it just swirl. And the kids loved it. They were attentive. There were two classes and they just loved what he did. Next slide please. These are our programs for the year. Sail On was a program that we, before COVID, had, had actually contracted with. And then because COVID came, we could not have Sail On. They're a tribute for the Beach Boys. And they will be here on April 16th, Tuesday. We will be at the Nazarene Church. You know, it's really hard to make a church into a tribute band for the, for the Sail On. So we're looking for equipment and the Kevin Kopp is going to help us too with what's there and what he has. So we can, they have a long list of things they need. They are flying in from Tennessee. So they are just bringing their instruments. They're not bringing their sound equipment and so forth. So they said, our program is only as good as our sound. So we're scratching to get some, a list of what they need. Next slide please. William Florian is coming. It's a trio. He's, he's picking up a brass, excuse me, bass guitar and a drum. And he was here in 2016 and people really loved him. He has a really nice wave with the audience. And we will be doing some folk songs. There will be, you know, some Beatles and Neil Diamond and some popular songs. And part of it will be sing-along when he invites us to sing. Yeah. And he will be doing two outreaches in different schools. It's really easy to take a guitar than it is to look for pianos in some of these schools. So he'll be going to probably Montague and Grenada School on the ninth and then he's staying over. So he was with the new Kristi Minstrels. He was one of the lead singers that goes back a ways. But yeah, so he will be here on May 10. And we will be at the Nazarene Church for that. And he's bringing his own sound equipment. So we don't have to get parts. Okay. Next slide please. The Golden Fair. We partnership with the fair. And we bring a free concert on Wednesday night at the fair. This not, this time it's going to be a tribute band. There'll be 30 minutes of Carrie Underwood and Jason Aldean, but they will be tribute, a tribute band. We also have a sponsor and that's First Five Families in Siskus. And we give out backpacks with books for children one to five. And Judy Washington is a board member and she really gets us out there. And then we give out these books and families are really appreciative and love little books for their, for their kids. Next slide please. Alias Brass and will probably be, if, if we can, on the 5th, which is the 5th of October. This is a group and I'm not sure where they're from. It's an agent in Southern California that approached us with this plan. And this group does play some pieces written by Kevin McKee. This is Brian's son that is living in Washington DC and he's written some wonderful music for brass instruments. And so we're really anxious to have them. I think it would be a fun concert. Next slide please. Kanga has been coming to Wairika for about 12 years. She's a classical, it's a classical program and she comes from New York City. She's a Juilliard graduate and she usually plays with a pianist. And sometimes it's difficult to get a pianist because she's really particular who she wants to play with. So she will be here sometime in November. I don't know how long, much longer we can afford her because she's been all over the world. She does a concert in Verona, Italy and Northern Italy. She goes to Poland and performs there. She went to South America and performed in Santiago with an orchestra. She performs with the Queens National Orchestra in New York City. She's all over the place. She's really a great promoter. And we have to tell her now, look at Kanga, you're coming to Wairika. We don't want any of this fancy music. You need to tone it down. Next slide please. Adam Swanson, this was a concert we had on Sunday afternoon. It was really a fun concert. He took us through ragtime, starting with Scott Joplin, all the way up to 1946. He also played four songs, showboat songs. And during intermission, we blindfolded him with a red scarf and we put a tablecloth across the keyboard and he played the tune. Amazing. It was fun and it was a great concert and people loved it. We had a pretty good attendance. We had, you know, for a rainy day. We had a few cancellations, but it was really a fun concert. Next slide please. I'd like to thank you and the Red Scarf would love to have you attend one of their concerts. And the Red Scarf Society in the community is anxious to return to the theater. I'm open to questions.
Thank you so much, Joan. All right.
Joan, I'd love to, I'd like to personally thank you. I appreciate all that Red Scarf does. I'm not belittling anybody, but Joan, I know that you have been a driving force behind this for years and you're surrounded by great people. And I personally want years, and you're surrounded by great people, and I personally want to thank you for it. I think back to the days when I heard Anthony Zerbi do poetry. Bob Marshall had Anthony Zerbi come up, and if, if you've, if you've known who he is, he's a, was a very famous actor in the sixties, seventies, and eighties, and he was, he's great at reading poetry. I am amazed, my grandfather was a very close friend of Kenneth T. and Eileen Norris, and he actually sat on their board, and the Norris Foundation does not give out money in the North State. Their money goes into Los Angeles. It has for, well, my grandfather's, they became friends shortly before the war, about 38 or 39. I'm just, it's, it's wonderful that you have that connection, and I really thank all of the people that donate, but the Norris Foundation is wonderful. For those of you who don't know, the Kenneth T., the Eileen, Kenneth T. and Eileen Norris Cancer Wing is at USC Hospital in Los Angeles. They donated that probably 40 years ago. So that's, I'm, I'm really, and I'm fabulous that you have that connection. I won't say anymore.
We're really glad we had that connection also.
Yeah, I'm not gonna say anymore, but I mean, I just, it's wonderful. But I am gonna go a little bit farther because, to the, and kind of address our, the council as a whole, because we we started this, a, a, a process of funding an HVAC system at the theater, and when it went out to bid the first time, we, we, you know, I think somebody recused or pulled themselves out at the last minute. It went out a second time, and some of the scope and stuff was changed, and let me look and see, because I know you put this on there. We had one incomplete bid, so it was deemed as non-responsive from a legal standpoint. We deemed it, and our attorney, Henyon, at the time, deemed it as non-responsive. Because of that, there really is no reason, we have no, there is no reason that we have to bid this job again. And, I mean, we, we need to get it done. I think of, they, the Red Scarf is just one of the groups or, 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 or people that use it. There are other people. And so I, I am going to, as, as one council member, say that I think we need to go ahead. We do not have to go back out to bid. I think we need to award this contract so that we can get the HVAC system ordered and here in Wairega, and we can get it in so that the Red Scarf and other other entities can use it. So I, I'm asking my fellow councilmen to push that forward tonight and endeavor. We don't have to, we don't have to have a vote. All we have to do, basically, it's not, it's not an action item. All we have to do is accept the the, the bid, and you, you'll, you'll see it right here if you, if you had a chance to look at it. There was some discussion between, one, again, I don't want to, I don't want to be offensive to our city, current city attorney. There has been discussion about, well, we should go back out, by, and attorneys, we pay attorneys to, to, to be careful and to be cautious. But this is one, this is one area where it's already bid twice. I, I mean, they
Three times.
Three, three times?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it's been bid out three times.
So it's not like we are stepping over, and it's not businesses to, to give favoritism to another, one business or another, and also it, it's, it's not like we're, you know, going, wow, get it through, push it, push it, push it. This has been out there for I don't know how many months. How many months we've been working on this? I don't, do any of you?
I think that the story goes back maybe five or six years, and then maybe somewhere in 2021, the bid started going out, is my understanding, and so ultimately, this has been out a total of three times. For a number of reasons, it's failed along the way, but I, what Mr. McCoy is referencing is ultimately, we had the change in council essentially, or attorney. And our prior attorney had given us direction to move in one way, and then our current attorney really had seen more risk because there was a material difference in the scope of work, and he is not incorrect on that, and so ultimately, the safer route is to go back out to bid, and that's kind of currently where we stand at the moment, is that Public Works is now back out with Pace, creating another bid package.
So, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna leave with this. I'm just gonna, I, I'm gonna ask my fellow councilmen and women to get behind this and get this passed so that, you know, get, get this job started by ask or directing the city to do it. Thank you. And thank you, Joan.
All right. Thank you, Councilman McCoy. Any other questions or comments?
Com- combination. Thanks. I just thank, thank the Red Scarf Society for everything they've done, just like, like Joan stated, the siding and the, everything, the roof and everything that's been involved. They've been so vocal on getting things done and action-packed on getting things done for the community theater. And you know what? It's, that's what this, the pre, previous, I gotta go back, we're gonna go back years, but there's been previous administrations that wanted to get rid of the theater, and, and, and you know what? We, as a council, said absolutely not. This is a community thing, that the community needs to enjoy it, and the community deserves it. And so I just thank you guys for everything you guys have done, because it's been amazing to be able to, to have this for the community and be able to share that with the community, because it's, it's, it's a valuable asset for the community, and I just thank you.
I really would like it to be used more. You know, we use it two or three times a year for performances, but there's no reason why it can't be used more. The Y uses it for their dance recitals. They're anxious to get that. The Seven Day Adventists do their plays there, and usually a Christmas program's there, so it does get used, but it should be used more. I'd like to see a service club. We can't do it because we don't have the power, but Little Avery Theater in Etna is showing movies, and they have Rotary helps them with, with the movies and the copyright problems they have to buy, and there's no reason why we can't get a, a screen in there. We would probably be willing to write a grant for the screen and some kind of projector. I think projector, digital projectors have come down. But, you know, in the wintertime, it would give kids something to do. And I know it's been very successful over in the valley. The Avery is a 300-seat theater, much like our theater here. Also, when we have performers that come in, they always comment, gosh, for a small town, you have a wonderful theater. And, you know, I know Mount Shasta would love to have a theater, and we are so lucky to have that, so, yeah, we need, we need to really keep it up.
I, I agree with you, Joan. This is, like I said, it's been a huge valuable asset for the community and can be used a lot more. I mean, I went to numerous functions there. And this keeps, the list could go on and on of how many things I went and seen there and watched perform there, and just, it's, yeah, it's just amazing for the community. And we, and we, and we actually, and we actually have. When I first got on board with the, with the council, we had the big controversial thing of the marijuana issue of being retail sales in, in Wairega, and we actually used that for that issue on the marijuana sales, and it was packed. We had a ton of people there, and it was great, and I would like to see more people show up, so we had to use, I would love to see it to where people would, would draw them in there for city council meetings for having a packed house. It would be great to see that. So yes, I agree, it could be used for the council and for the city and different aspects, so I, I, I wanna, I wanna thank Mr. McCoy for bringing that up, because this has been an issue that's on the HVAC system that has been going back for years. Me sitting on council for a lot of years, I've been complaining about it, and it needs to get done, needs to get done, needs to get done. Like I said, the previous administration just wanted to, to basically shoot it down and get rid of it, and us as a council said absolutely not. We want to see this. It's a valuable asset, so I tend, I want to agree with Mr. McCoy. We need to get this thing done. Push forward with this issue, that the obstacles that are presented to us right now on the bidding process is just minute, that it just needs to be done, so I agree with Mr. McCoy on that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Cake. Councilman Davis or Baker? Council Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joan, thank you very much. The Red Scarf Society is pretty awesome, and you do a great job for our community. Yes, wonderful.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker?
I just want to say thank you, and I so enjoyed your presentation tonight. It was like, you know, a stroll down memory lane. So I'll share some of my favorite memories of the Wairega Community Theater. When I was a sophomore in high school in 1976, one of my friends and I, our project was to hand him the black curtain that went across the stage. And we had a heck of a good time doing that. It took us a few days, but that was one of my fondest memories of that, that building. And in addition to that, I took my daughter, when she was small, to so many different programs, and I watched her dance on stage in her little ballet recitals that she had. And in addition, I used to utilize that, the community theater for the swearing-in ceremonies for county elected officials when I was the county clerk, and I just think that it's a, just a beautiful building, and we are just committed as the city to make sure that we can get this building usable again and fill it up, and I love the idea of movies being shown. I just think that that would be a great addition to our community, so I want to thank you all for the time that you put in, and I have to say, I love your red scarves. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. All right. I've had several conversations with Joan at our coffee shop, and she shares her frustrations with me when I see her, and I'm just as frustrated as she is when we have, as you say, a great theater in our town of, you know, 7,000 people, a little over, and we're so lucky to have it, and it's sad to see it not being used to its full potential. And the time is now to move forward and stop the, just, I know we have to be somewhat cautious, but but we need to get moving forward with it to bring it to be utilized with concerts, plays. As you said, the movies at Avery's are sold, sold out, and at, they show the old movies, and I think they charge, you know, very little. And everybody has a blast, and so I'd like to see that. Hopefully, it comes to Wairega as well. But I want to recognize the Red Scarf Society and everybody who volunteers there, because we get told many times in this room that the spirit of our community is not alive anymore, that there's no community spirit, that nobody cares anymore. And when I hear or see your, hear you and see your presentation in front of us and see the volunteers that are sitting behind you, you prove them wrong, because you are the spirit of our community and continuing to care about some, like, call it building, but a asset to this community that people use. And so I say thank you, that it's, you know, the volunteerism is not you know, dead here. It is alive, and you're examples of that, so I want to say thank you very much. So. Yeah. So I'll go to our ma, city manager, Mr. Ledbetter, and then have him maybe touch base and comment on what he provided us with the HVAC system and kind of touch a little bit, as Mr. McCoy did, and what you're maybe needing from us, or where we go from here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Jason Ledbetter, the city manager. So yeah, I provided just a kind of the story as to where we currently stand. It's just telling you what we're currently doing. Ultimately, you can give us different direction if you so choose, but just so you're aware, so the, the theater HVAC project, and, and we put this together because obviously, we knew that with Ms. Favreau here, that ultimately, we would have this conversation on some level, so it's good for everybody to be on the same page as to where the city currently stands. So the theater HVAC project has been out to bid a total of three times. The first time, there were two bids submitted. One bid was determined to be non-responsive, and the other was withdrawn at the bidder's request, which required council to reject both bids and direct city staff to go out to bid again. The city then worked with Pace Engineering to reevaluate the scope of the project. It was determined that the project required far more work than originally believed to ensure the safety of the HVAC system. Pace Engineering worked with the city to update the project, which yielded new plans and specifications for bidding. The second bid yielded only one incomplete bid, which was deemed non-responsive. With approval of the city attorney at the time, which is different representation than now, a council rejected the bid and directed staff to re-advertise. The third bid yielded no response, which staff believed fulfilled the requirements under Public Contract Code 20166, such that the city no longer had to follow the competitive bidding process. The prior city attorney at that time concurred with staff assessment and confirmed that the city could choose and negotiate with an HVAC contractor to do the work. So the city went down that pathway, and at that time, council changed direction with legal, and we obviously ended up, you know, bringing on Mr. Jared with CHW, and then bringing on Mr. Toley with the Water Group, and then bringing on Mr. Wright with the Silver and Wright. The city selected a contractor and began to prepare the contract documents. However, the contractor had not bid on the project due to concerns about the design. Pace and the contractor discussed the project and worked together to ensure that the contractor and Pace were satisfied with the HVAC replacement and all the different requirements. And then we started to work with, you know, getting a contract put together to put this person into contract at that point. That was kind of when Mr. Jared was first brought up to speed on this project, and ultimately, really felt like the advice was that there was just too much risk, because there was a material difference between what we were currently asking to get done and what had been non-responsive on the prior bid, and so ultimately, we're just back to working with Pace, getting new plans and specifications in the scope of work, and putting a fourth bid out on the street is where we currently stand.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. And is, so is there anything currently you need from us, or is that just the process we're at right now as far as an update goes, or?
Yeah, that's just the process right now, so currently, we're, you know, Public Works is working with Pace Engineering and getting that scope of work finalized once again, and then it will be put out to bid. That's what we're doing.
So if there's a, if there's a lack of interest, or say no response for a fourth bid, then what do we, what is the, what do we do then?
We'd work with our city attorney and ultimately see if we were able to then just contract, like we were attempting to do before. We would just choose a contractor. Ultimately, if you go out with the same scope of work multiple times and you don't get a bid, you are allowed through state law then to just work with, just to basically hire a contractor at that point without having to worry about the RFP process, but we're currently doing, working on the bid documents for another RFP.
Okay, and that, but we went through that process, but, but you're saying because of a change within the scope of the project that was no longer valid to do that process and that we have to go back out again, or that was the advice of the attorney, current attorney?
Yeah, that's the attorney's job, is to tell us what the risk is, and he felt that there was just risk there, and so ultimately, we're back to going out to bid. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Councilman McCoy?
If this council wanted to go ahead and move forward, since we've probably put out to bid three times, no responses, it'd have to be acceptable to the city manager, if the council decided to do it at this time?
That's really your guys' tolerance for risk and a decision that you guys have to make that ultimately, you know, we would follow suit on, so yeah, I guess, I guess so, if that was a determination you guys made.
And before I go, I think, oh yeah, Mr. Jared is on the, on the line, so before we go to him, any further questions from council members, then I'll go to Mr. Jared for his comments.
I don't, I don't think, yeah, as far as, I don't think, I don't, the scope of the project has not changed enough to, to justify putting it out, back out to bid, in my opinion, and I think we're wasting our time. in my opinion, and I think we're wasting our time, and we've, we've wasted the time of our citizens and
Mr. Mayor.
and everything else. So I feel that we should, we should move ahead with it.
I'm gonna come to you, Mr. Jared, in one second.
Okay, that's my comment on that. Thank you. And I feel the scope of the project has not changed enough to justify putting it back out for bid again and waste the public's time.
And Councilman Baker?
I, I would just like to call point of order that this is not an agendaized item to take any kind of action on. So I really would like to hear from Mr. Jared, and perhaps this could be placed on a future agenda.
Yeah. It was brought up for discussion. It's not on the agenda, but it was brought up for discussion after the presentation for questions or comments. But I will go to Mr. Jared now, is, because he's been waiting, but I was waiting for Mr. Keg to finish before I went to him. Mr. Jared.
Councilmember Baker hit it on the head. This is not before you to take any action. The discussion you've been having about this is a little bit, going a little bit wide from what's acceptable under the Brown Act of issue coming up. If you would like this to come back for further update, I recommend that we go into closed session to talk about a potential for litigation as to that matter, and you can hear my opinion on what had happened at that time.
Yeah, we'll do that because we have not been advised by you at all on this, or anybody that this is where this is going. So we would definitely need to talk to you about.
It's my recollection that the, the staff has been working on this since December, beginning of December to get that, the scope in order to be able to put it back out to bid.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Keg has a question.
Can, no, I, I wanna, oh, respect Colleen Baker's request to put it on the next agenda. Is that correct? Was that okay?
Appropriate for the city attorney.
That's fine.
So the, so the next.
I want to clarify, because we're not asking for a vote on it. This is something that we've already voted on. This has been approved. What we're, what we're talking about right now is the bid and the bid process. We don't, there's no need for another vote on this. And, and with all due respect to our city attorney, we don't need to go into closed session over it. You know, there's, there's risk, and we step out on the sidewalk, there's risk. Every time we step out, we get hit by a car or whatever. And I understand where he's coming from, and that's what we pay him for. But as, as a wise attorney once told me, the only time you ever are gonna, well, I'm not even gonna say. Anyway, so we're not looking for a vote here. I'm, I'm just, what I'm asking for is some direction towards the, I think you are too, sir, towards the city manager. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to belittle what you're saying, but we don't need a vote. We've already.
And again, this is not a agenda, and it's not appropriate to proceed in this manner.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Jared. We're not asking for a vote. What we're asking for is direction. So. We, I mean, we can kick, we can kick this thing. We've been kicking it for how long? A year? We can kick it further. Maybe, maybe some, we'll get another couple city managers in ten years that want to give the, want to give the theater away like we've, we've had.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be my recommendation that we, that we do agendas is for closed session, and I will explain to you my concerns at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll bring that back. The next meeting date, what is that?
Two twenty.
Two twenty? So, and you want to talk about it in closed session? Correct. Okay, and it does not need to become for the agenda because it's already been back to an agenda item for a vote because we've already voted on it, correct?
I'll explain the situation in closed session.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking you. Do I need to put it on the, I need to, because she's asked if we bring it back to the agenda. So I'm asking you, do we bring it back on the agenda, or you just want to have it in closed session? She asked for it to be on the agenda, but it's already been voted for.
Again.
Councilman Baker, I'm sorry.
It is not at a position yet to take action in open session.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Thank you. So closed session item, we'll have to have closed session item and agendaize that item for discussion. All right. Thank you, everybody, for your suggestions and advice and commentary, and thank you, red scarf.
Yes, thank you. Thanks very much.
And hopefully, we'll have some answers for you very soon on that. Okay, well, great. So now we move on to, sorry, number six, we're going to public comments. Public, public participation is welcomed and invited at all city council meetings. This time is set aside for residents to address the work, the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the regular agenda. If your comments concern an item noted on the regular agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. The city requests that persons addressing the city council refrain from making personal slanderous, profane, or disruptive remarks. Council members, when recognized by the mayor, may ask clarifying questions of the presenter, but no action may be taken by the city council during the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking action on items, item not listed on the posted agenda. This item is set aside for residents to address the city council on matters listed on the consent agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern an item listed under public hearing or no, or new business sections of the agenda, please address the council when that item is open for public comment. Please speak into the microphone from the podium. The podium electronically adjusts up and down to accommodate the speaker. Please state your name for the record providing, prior to providing your comments. Please address the council as a whole. If you have a document to present, please provide a minimum of seven copies. These become public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since council is unable to take action on issues not on the agenda, your matter may be referred to staff or follow-up or placed on a future agenda item. Or future agenda, I'm sorry. The public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period, conversations with the city, the council or the city staff. Have any public comment at this time?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question? I'm sorry to interrupt. I know we have a, you know, staff report, but city manager that is actually on homelessness and whatnot, what we're talking about. I didn't know if any of the audience wanted to come up and speak, if we're gonna allow it at that point in time. Because we generally don't allow it at city manager reports on talking, verbalizing on comments of that sort. So I don't know if it needs, if we want that to be brought out right now, if there's anybody that wants to speak about the homelessness and the issues on that. We are gonna possibly bring that back, but I would like to, you know, clarification on that, if they want to speak after the city manager report, or if they want to give out any comments right now, if there's anybody out there.
So could you?
I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, if you want them to give any comments after the city manager reports on what he's gonna give on the Hill in the presentation on, on homelessness. If he was open for public comment at that point in time, or do you want that to be right now only on, on the presentation by the city manager?
I guess you would have to give your report if someone had any questions.
I just want to make, yeah, if there's an open, if you're open for that, I think council, we normally don't do that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we'll have them.
If there's any public comments at that time on that issue.
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, that's item number eleven. But if you guys want to have public, audience wants to have public comment when we give that report.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I will close public comment. Item number seven, this is the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. A approval ratification of payments issued from January eighth, twenty twenty-four through January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. B, approval of minutes on the regular meeting held January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. C, approval of minutes on the special meeting held January thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. D, approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, resolution of the city council of the city of Waireka approving and adopting a comprehensive pay schedule for full-time employees, part-time employees, and elected officials in accordance with CalPERS guidelines. E, approval of resolution, resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh five, resolution of the city council approving amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, budgeting, authorizing the city manager to execute related documents for the Waireka Main Street Water Sewer Improvement Project. F, cash balances, budget to actual fiscal performance reports for August twenty twenty-three. The recommend city council actually before you is the motion to approve and adopt the consent agenda of the city council, the city of Waireka as presented. What are the wishes of the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I need to pull seven, eight. I have a possible financial conflict with that one on the finances, payments.
You're gonna pull it, or you don't, you can't vote on it?
I cannot vote, vote on that, I'm sorry.
Okay. So you will.
On, on seven A, yeah.
Recuse yourself from item seven A. Okay, so what I will do is go, so Councilman Keg needs to recuse himself from seven A. So I will go to items B through F, correct?
Mr. Mayor, what, what was that?
Councilman Keg is recusing himself from seven A because he has a financial conflict of that item. Yes, okay. So this will be, will be about A, seven, B through F. What is the wishes of the council? Councilman McCoy?
I will make the motion to adopt the consent agenda for the city council of the city of Waireka as presented in seven B through F only.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman McCoy, seven B through F.
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councilman Keg. I'll do roll call. Councilman Keg?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Aye.
Middleton, aye. The motion passes five to zero. Okay, so this will be the consent agenda, agenda item seven A with Councilman Keg recusing himself. What are the wishes of the council? Councilman McCoy?
I will make the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council, the city of Waireka, number seven A, with Councilman Keg recusing himself.
I have a motion from Councilman Keg. I will second the motion. Middleton, I'll do roll call. Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy?
Yes.
And Middleton, aye. The, the motion passes four to zero with Keg recusing himself from item seven A. All right, we will, number eight, is no business. Number nine, then number nine, so now we are going number ten. New business, this is Councilmember Dwayne Keg has brought before us. This is item A, agenda title for citizen of the year at January sixth, twenty twenty-four, city council meeting. Councilmember Dwayne Keg requested that citizen of the year recognition be placed on the city council agenda for discussion.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Now, I was gonna do some level of an introduction, but yeah, so ultimately, Mr. Keg had made the request because in the past, the chamber that is now dissolved used to handle an event that was for citizen of the year. But I think there was more than just the choosing of citizen of the year. I think there was a banquet that would need to be discussed tonight. Mr. Keg advocated to have a discussion with the entire city council at the possibility of seeing if there was a nonprofit that maybe could stand this event up again. And so we are here as staff tonight to take direction from city council on all avenues that they would like us to take direction on, on reinstituting the person of the year, or citizen of the year for the city of Waireka.
Thank you, Mr. Ledbetter.
So I'll now, now, thank you. I just, yeah, this was a, I think, one of those things that, an event that's, puts pride back into our community again. Just like we were just talking about earlier about the volunteer base on saving the community theater. I mean, this is one of those things that brought, brought pride to our community, the citizen of the year, the nonprofit of the year, the business of the year, all the, all the above was, brings pride to our community. And I think it's a valuable asset to bring back to our community. Just unfortunately, with the dissolve of the chamber doesn't mean that we should dissolve something that's important to our community. And I think, I think everybody here would agree that, you know, we want, we want pride back in our community. We want to see people recognized and businesses recognized that have put forth a lot of effort and a lot of time and making this a better place, making Waireka a better place. And so I really feel that we should bring this back. That's why I want to bring it back to the council. Just, there's different avenues that we could take. You know, obviously, a nonprofit would be the most suited for this. And I just want to add that if it does, you know, if we have a nonprofit step up to do that, that is actually a moneymaker. When I sat on the chamber for five years, on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, it was one of the number one moneymakers for the Chamber of Commerce. So it's not, it's not just one of those free, you know, free things that we give away. It's actually a moneymaker for those, because the, the dinners that they put on and the awards ceremony they put on, it brings people there. But that's not the reason why I'm bringing that up. I, like I said, I just want, I want to bring back a sense of pride to our community again. And I think it's, it's a necessity to start somewhere, and whether we have a chamber that steps up to the plate in the future, we don't know. But we do know that, I do know that it was a valuable thing for our community to recognize people, businesses, nonprofits, and let them know that we appreciate them, just like we, we appreciate the Red Scarf Society for what they've done. We need to recognize that on all the nonprofits, all the people out there. So I just want to hear the input of the council, if they have any ideas. I know that we have a good diversity of council members here that have a lot of good connections to different groups. And I would like to hear their, their advice and their recommendation on this. So that's what I'm here for, is to, to put this forth and see what everybody else has in mind. So.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Keg, and thank you for bringing this back for discussion. So. Anybody want, anybody want to go and talk about citizen of the year? Okay, Councilman Davis?
I think it's a great idea, Mr. Keg, just want you to know that. And I think it's a good thing for pride in your community. It's, it's a great idea to get some leaders in our community and the businesses that step up and, and recognize those folks, that we are really still Waireka, and we are proud to be Waerekins. And it's like Joan and the Red Scarf Society, they are proud to be Waerekins, and they're bringing great culture to our community. So that needs, that type of stuff needs to be recognized. And so I am like that. I, I agree, and I do think that there are nonprofits available to do this. I think we should look into it further.
I guess the reason why I brought it back is I just want to hear the support and see what the direction of the council wants to go. Because I think if it was presented out in the community, that we support this as a council, as a city, that I think there will be, you know, nonprofits that might step up to it and want to do it and stuff. That's, that's the main reason why I wanted to bring it forth, because it's been put in the back burner for so long, you know, that we haven't had that for quite a while. And I think it's, you know, something that we need to bring back as a council. So thank you.
Right, thank you, Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker?
Thank you. Councilman Keg.
I'm supportive of this idea in concept. I just have a lot of questions because, as you know, I'm always bottom line, what's it going to cost the city? Because we are responsible for city finances and I don't know if your vision of this is the city sponsoring it through a nonprofit or going out and having city staff solicit nonprofits to see if there's an interest for nonprofit to take this on. I think it's a great idea, but I don't think the city should be involved in any of the finances, especially since it would be a for-profit program. So that's, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Perfect. No, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that because that's the reason why I brought that back as far as the financial aspect of it and why you mentioned that, because it can be a profitable thing for a nonprofit where they can bring in some little bit of revenue if they wanted to do that. So I guess, yeah, as far as, you know, the city forking out money, I wasn't necessarily saying that. So yes, I, I agree. I don't know. It's nothing we technically budgeted for. Is it something we could have? I mean, as far as finance wise, we probably could. But I think we need to explore and, and encourage some nonprofits. So yeah, maybe staff time or, or maybe even council time, you know, encouraging some of the nonprofits to, to jump on this. Because generally the, about this time of year is when we wouldn't in the past would have the citizen of the year when we did it in the years past. It was generally around February is when we used to do the, of the citizen of the year. It kind of got bumped a little bit later in March, but generally it was around February is when we did it on, when I was on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. But so we're kind of losing that for possibly this year. But I mean, it still could be later in the year. They can set a, you know, time whenever they wanted to because it doesn't really matter a timeframe wise. It was just nice to have it same time every year, just to bring people and they knew, they knew that it was coming in February and then they would prepare for it and, and move along. But yeah, I, I tend to agree that, you know, financially, I don't, not necessarily looking at support from the city. But I just want verbal support that would, you know, as council that we want to try to, to move forward to something and whatever that may be, you know. So yes, thank you.
All right.
Councilman McCoy? I, I think it's a good idea. I think February, I, I can't begin to understand why, but I think February, why it was in a February. But I can say that it was, it would break up the winter time very well. And then I think all five of us, we have been dealing, we've been grappling with the use of facilities, things that we are not, we don't have any capital to replace. We don't have a capital outlay fund to replace. Although it might be nice, I understand we, you know, if we don't have to do seed money, it might be nice to extend the community center. Again, and I'm asking you to talk about it, what the thoughts are if we extended the community center at no cost, at least for the first, and I know, don't, don't, don't beat me up over there, okay? But I'm just saying, how, how would that work? What, what do you forethink? I don't know.
Yeah, I, I thank you. I, I kind of agree with you on that. So thank you. That would be something that the city could contribute that would not really necessarily be a huge financial burden.
May I make a comment? So.
Councilman Baker, yes, go ahead.
I really have a hard time in my mind wrapping around using city resources for a for-profit event. And I know that Mr. McCoy, excuse me, Councilman McCoy, and I sit on the finance committee. And one of the things that we're looking at is an actual process for all these requests. And I always want to know, what does it actually cost the city to provide any kind of support? I mean outright financial or indirectly through, you know, in this case, donating the use of the community center. So again.
So I brought it up because we're talking about on finance committee. So.
Again, I, I support the idea. I would like to see, you know, the city recognize or not the city, but people recognized that have contributed greatly to the city and businesses. I'm just not sold on the idea of expending any city funding for it.
All right, thank you.
Come quick on that. So yeah, I, I know we're trying to work on trying to make up something for any, anybody that's using some of the city privileges or whatever you want to call it. Just to let everybody know that the Chamber of Commerce numerous times did use the, the community center and the fees were waived in the past, but that's in the past. And I, I do understand that. But I just want to, I just want people to understand that that has, that was a profitable event. It was one that the city actually encouraged the Chamber of Commerce at the time to put on numerous times. And like I said, I know for a fact because I was at the Chamber of Commerce, then where we put them on at the community center. And I stood in front of the council, asking the council to waive the fees for the community center. So I know that that was, that actually happened at one, numerous times. So. But that's, that's previous to, so I, I totally understand what you're saying, Ms. Baker. Thank you.
All right. Um. I would like to see it come back. I guess it'd be no different than us just trying to find a nonprofit, you know, like the Elks, they did the parade. All these other organizations have, have to taken over where the chamber has done some of these events before. And then the other events, Night of Light. So I guess I'll be reaching out to finding a nonprofit to put on the event and recognize our volunteers, nonprofits, citizen of the year, business of the year, whatever it may be. So I'm, I'm for if we can find somebody, I mean, and then have them come probably before us, just like the I'm drawing a blank. What's the organization for the night of lights? I'm sorry.
Discover Siski?
Discover Siski. I was gonna discover Siski or you know, come before us, but they have a plan and then maybe go from there. But I'd like to see it come back, but just have an organization come before us. Like the other events that they've had to step forward because of the chamber has dissolved and not doing anything anymore. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Like I said, I just really wanted to hear the support of the, the, the council as far as wanting to see it back. And maybe this will help with, spark something from some nonprofits out there that maybe we can encourage them to jump on that and, and make it happen again someday. Because I, I think it's a valuable, valuable asset for the community. I really do. So.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, Councilman McCoy?
Councilman Keg. Was the chamber, when you were on it, was it a five oh one C three or? Okay, so I just, I appreciate this and I, I want, that's why I brought it up because I want to hear, because I know on finance committee, we're working on things. So when we talk about, I want to qualify for me because I'm not sure that we're all on the same page, understanding. When you say that it makes profit, in the past, they didn't do it for profit. It wa, it was done by a not-for-profit organization. But it wasn't a money-losing situation. Okay.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that clarification.
Yes, Councilman Davis?
You know, there was a chamber. And it was not, it's just recently was not in Waireka. Crystal Stiles Mant was the chairman of that chamber. And they did have exactly what Mr. Keg was requesting because my wife won citizen of the year for her public health approach. And so, and that was just maybe two years ago. So it is out there and I don't know whatever happened to that. When she left, I think she turned it over to Corey Hayden and the DDC to do. So that might still be in place. It may not, may have gone by the board when she left. But that is out there or was, let's put it that way.
Thank you. Wasn't that one, as we discussed, they they kind of had it in the Shasta Valley and honored people from other cities. So I think what Mr. Keg is asking for it to be specific for Waireka businesses, specific for Waireka citizen, specific for Waereka profit, correct? Because that was people from all over the county. They got together in Shasta Valley, Supervisor Ogren's, not their head. So as they kind of did a whole Siski County based one. So I think Councilman Keg, just to clarify, he wants for Waireka citizen of the year, Waereka business of the year, and so on, so on. So.
Yep. That's why I've brought in Waereka council.
Right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I don't know what you want, where you want to go from here. Nothing right now.
We'll bring it back soon as we get some potential bites, I guess.
All right.
Yeah, I guess we just need some level of direction from you guys, but it is an agendized item. So you'll want to see if there's public comment as well.
Okay, great. So before we could do that, I'll go out to public comment. Public comment regarding the citizen of the year. I mean, you need to have you come down to the podium, please. The podium. Yeah, public speakers all come land for the podium.
Marie Archery, I'm the one who brought this up because I nominated Officer Elliott for the person of the year. And that still stands. I still nominate him. And yeah, we need to find someone who will do this. The Elks Club is perfect. Any elk around here? Who's your daddy? You know, this is perfect because they can buy beer, they can do all the things and they'll still raise money on this, even though it's not a money issue, you know, and they've got a big enough place to help hold this. So it's perfect. And if you want my help, I'll help you. I'll go talk to your daddy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don Marie.
I'm Darlene Brenner. A lot of you know me, knew my husband Urs. He's been dead, but almost 10 years. And the very last memories I have of him is the community theater. You probably were all there. Steve Nelson got up and and Urs, and he sang happy birthday to Steve. It was his birthday, December. I'm trying to think of the date, but anyway, it was 2013. The next day, Urs was dead. The very next day, I miss that community theater. I have a lot of memories there. My children sang up there. My husband, Urs, he wasn't much of a singer, but he was in the choir. And so was I. I wouldn't do a solo for anything. But that place has so many memories and I'm really hoping that something can be done. In fact, I have some of his money and I'm willing to donate a little here and there. I, I put it to things I really love and that community theater was special to me.
Thank you so much.
John Michael Patterson. I'm a board member of the Waereka Food Bank, as well as a member of the Waereka Host Lions Club, Red Scarf, and a bunch of other groups. Speaking to the citizen of the year, I think it would be really good to bring it back with its long history in this community. And speaking to Councilman Davis's thought, yes, we did have one in 2022 with the North Siski Chamber of Commerce. I had actually helped Crystal organize that one. We had it out on a person's ranch out east of Montague. And it was divided up into sections since the chamber was called the North Siski. There was a Butte Valley section, the Shasta Valley section, Down River and Scott Valley. Each section had their citizen, their organization, business and student. Or as they called it, emerging leader, were the categories they had. That's pretty much all I wanted to say about that. But what you're going to look for is you may want one organization to put it on. A lot of our organizations are not going to be able to take on that burden themselves. I know for a fact, even though as much as Lions Club would love to help that, since we were actually created in 1925 as a part to support the Waereka Chamber of Commerce, our group ourselves could unfortunately not do that by ourselves. So you're maybe going to want to get a couple of groups together because I'm sure us and Lions would support it. But we couldn't provide all the aspects up to it with our 13 members at the moment. Well, like Lions or Kiwanas, Lions and Kiwanas and Rotary all working together to put it on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, John Michael.
Supervisor Nancy Ogren, Siski County District Four. I too was a board member on the chamber and also past president.
It's fine, it's fine. Thank you.
So John Michael just took my thunder. Yeah, thank you to all the community members that have forever put that event on. It's amazing that our community can come together and recognize the leaders and the volunteers in this community that have done so much good for the last, oh, I don't know, 30 or 40 or 50 years. That the list is huge of, of the past people that have been represented. Some of which I think might even be in this room. So I believe I might have the book, the golden book. If not, I think I might know where to find it. Not that we wouldn't want to do something different. We, not me, no. But I would pass that on if I, if, if I can get it. It is a wonderful event to pass on. One thing to consider is it does take money to make money. So somewhere along the line, there will have to be seed money to make it happen because nothing is free. Costs have gone up. So what we thought of in the past as, oh, it really doesn't cost very much, but if you're going to get a venue, it costs money. If you're going to get food, it costs money. If you're going to get, you know, community organizations to, you know, like it used to happen that there would be gift baskets to, to auction off, to make money, to pay for the event. Every time you do a fundraiser, everybody's giving away things. So, you know, then you have to beg for stuff. So all of that costs money. It's harder and harder to get, you know, merchants to donate. So all those things come into play. We don't want to lose that tradition. It is a beautiful tradition and it's one that this community really needs and it's great to recognize people. So yeah, keep it alive if you can, if there's any way to do that because it is well worthwhile for this community. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. All right. I will close the public comment section. I, I believe. Mr. Mayor better?
Yeah, I just needing kind of clarification on direction here is from what I'm hearing ultimately is, do you want me or staff to reach out to nonprofits? Do you want us to in, start engaging people and ultimately bring back some ideas and some interest levels at that point in the next couple of months or I believe that's what I'm hearing, but I'm not sure.
I mean, I was gonna say, I guess, and Councilman Keg, since it's his item he brought up, but I think it's I guess we'll first have to see if anybody has any interest to put out some feelers, correct? But I'll let you.
Um, I, yeah, I just, if the, if it's okay with the council, yeah, to actually maybe have the staff just make a couple of phone calls like with the Elks and some of the other organizations too, I think would be an easy, an easy phone call if it's okay with the council. I know it's, it is staff time, so it is, it is public money. So. an easy phone call if it's okay with the council. I know it's, it is staff time, so it is, it is public money. So I still, I'd still like to encourage it. If it's okay with council.
I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, it's
Just to reach out.
Maybe a little, a little public money, but it's a, a public.
Service.
And we've heard some from public who would like to see it back, who recognizes our public who's out there doing good things and in our community. So I'm fine with that. Council Baker?
Thank you. I'm, I'm fine with that too. But I would like to see all of the nonprofits, all of the organizations contacted to give it equal footing in the community.
Actually, I just wonder, and like we can do that. I'm wondering if that's the case. Should we put together a package and like, is this an RFP? Like, I don't understand how
Yeah.
the determination would be made, but ultimately and we certainly can start just going down the list of nonprofits and working and seeing where the interest is ultimately.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, are you referring to nonprofits that are service organizations? You're not necessarily talking about like a rescue ranch or, or something like that. I'm just trying to clarify.
Thank you. I actually think that if Rescue Ranch wanted to do this, I think that would be a pretty cool thing. We could have the Dog Trainer of the Year Award and I'm, I'm just adding a little bit of humor here. No. I I, I just think that it's important to give any organization that might be interested in this and maybe the way to begin doing this would be perhaps to put out some information from the city. And to see if there's any interest that way. I know it's kind of difficult because we don't have really what we, what I consider a local newspaper anymore. And we've had discussions about the limited news sources here in Wairika as well as Siski County. But maybe it might be a realistic idea to just put something on our Facebook page and see what kind of interests you get from that. Instead of maybe at this point in time, making lots of phone calls and I think it's a little early to put out an RFP personally. So that's my input.
You clarify. You clarify. Thank you.
So yeah, I think that's good direction. I'm good. We'll throw something on the Facebook and then probably ultimately to reach out to as many nonprofits that we're aware of in the city.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Better. Okay. Item number 11. City manager's staff reports. City manager and staff may make brief announcements and reports at this time. City manager Jason Ledbetter. He's going to do a presentation update on measures taken regarding the encampment hill upon Campus Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Wairika City Council. So yeah, I'm going to give a presentation, just a general overview of kind of homeless programs where we currently stand. That's going to lead into our police chief, Mr. Gilman. Kind of talking about with myself included, the generalized plan that we have for a cleanup over on Campus Drive where a number of unhoused individuals are currently residing. So next slide, please. So ultimately, these are pictures. I think we saw some photos circulating out there on the internet here over the last couple of weeks. These are not those photos. These are photos from prior cleanups. These are the before pictures. So the city has been engaged. Certainly in my two-year span here and prior to that, on a number of cleanups in different locations. Primarily over on the Campus Drive area and in my tenure, definitely over, you know, a handful of cleanups have transpired. And this is the general idea of what things kind of looked like before a cleanup takes place. Next slide, please. So just talking about kind of some general ideas, throwing these out there through the COC. When we talk about kind of the roots of homelessness, there's a number of topics that we can talk about, but generally, when we talk about trying to resolve the problem on some level, you're talking about beds and you're talking about housing. And so we're very aware that we have a, through the Community Development General Plan, housing element, that we have a very low vacancy rate for rental units. And you may say, well, what effect does that have? Ultimately, through the COVID era, working or engaging the county. There were a number of folks that normally would have been put up, you know, through different programs here in the city of Wairika. It was such a low vacancy rate. They were going out to Hamburg and Down River. And a lot of people couldn't utilize those services because they didn't have vehicles. And so just with the lack of vacancy means that there's a lack of ability for a number of different programs to be able to access housing through the county and then provide that housing to the community that's in need. Obviously extremely low availability and the affordability of housing plays plays a some level of a cause. Waitlist for public housing, Section Eight voucher programs. And then permanency programs to assist with housing stability. Next slide, please. So this is just a general idea. These are not, are not the latest numbers. I know Councilmember Keg is highly involved in the point in time count. These numbers are, I believe, are from 2022, but just kind of give you a general idea within Siski County and ultimately being the county seat. We do see a number of individuals that need service that may not be from Wairika that end up in Wairika that are currently unhoused or homeless. And so you can see the sheltered count at 276 and the unsheltered count at 231. These numbers are from 2020 or they were accumulated in 2022. Next slide. And obviously there's folks that have a lot of questions, but there's case law at play here with kind of enforcement and how, how local agencies engage this population. And so there's a lot of very famous cases. If you follow along, one of them being Martin versus Boise. We're familiar with Blake versus the city of Grants Pass, and obviously that's headed to the Supreme Court. And so it's not just you go out there and do whatever you want. It's ultimately the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals to set the standard on how enforcement happens with this particular population. So there's a lot of law that dictates how a community or how a local agency can engage with the homeless or the in-house population on public property. Next slide. So just kind of going through some of the assessment and risk of homelessness in Wairika, there are shortages of workforce housing to purchase and rent. Housing that is affordable for seniors, housing that is accessible and affordable for persons with disabilities. Employers, we heard during the housing element, were losing employees because they couldn't attract them because of the inability to find decent housing. Household vulnerable to displacement, citywide median income that is less than 80% of state median. And patterns of concentration based on income, lack of access to opportunity. Fair housing education, limited community awareness of fair housing protections and enforcement resources. The housing stock in general, especially units east of Interstate Five that require repair or rehabilitation, including accessibility improvements for individuals. Next slide. So we have our general focus that we talk about a lot here on the number of projects that we're working on. So water security is a big deal to us. Hazard mitigation in the form of fire safety. Obviously housing, we've itemized that we think that's something that we need to work on. Fiscal vibrancy and we hope to transition into economic development. Housing is really where we see the homelessness issue for the city of Wairika. It's kind of a subset for us under housing. Next slide, please. So some people kind of ask, hey, what's currently happening? There's some level of shared responsibility here on this issue. And so you know, the county has moved forward and they have, you know, supposedly will be opening crossroads in May. We can all see up on Foothill that project moving forward. That is not open. There's really no resource open at the moment for infrastructure, but a lot is happening behind the scenes. So the county also went and got a grant for a low barrier shelter that's going to be on Main Street. That is continues to seem to be postponed, but ultimately there is work getting done in that space. We're certainly hopeful that in the next month, month and a half, that that would open. The city council had approved a home key grant application that converts a motel into non-congregate housing that would affect this community population on some level. Unfortunately, that fell through last grant cycle because the person we were working with kind of couldn't, we couldn't reach negotiation on the cost of the, of the unit. But we will be bringing back a home key application for the city council to consider at some point in the next coming month. So that's not guaranteed, but that's an item that we will bring forward. But hypothetically would have an effect on this population. Currently, the council has directed the city attorney is engaged in kind of this discussion over this pallet shelter idea and a possible a possible joint project there with the county. And then certainly we have the opportunity of development of new housing or affordable housing. The city did sign two MOUs, one with RCHDC and the other with Danco. And ultimately they are looking at different possible projects for affordable housing within the community. And then we do have private development that we're working with that are considering market rate housing, but nothing we can come out and discuss at the moment. And then the county did a wonderful thing recently. They had a meeting the other day. They've streamlined the ADU process. And so ultimately we are going to take those items and within our housing element, we're going to take engineered approved plans. We're going to submit them to our consultant that would add on the requirements for fire sprinkler and for solar ultimately. And then we would be able to put those online and you could get free engineered design plans for an ADU. You would not have to pay for those. So that's just another opportunity to alleviate housing for all, not just necessarily for the subset population. Next slide. So what are the programs that we are kind of running? So Mr. Keg is really well aware here. Through the continuum of care, there was a grant opportunity. The county manages that grant funding. And they've contracted with the city to offer a homeless liaison officer position. Commonly, we refer to that as Officer Elliott. Cities P, P, I think this is PLHA, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, local housing allocation. It's been consolidated with the county. So we went around and worked with all the different cities that weren't utilizing this money and it was going to have to go back to the state. And we helped funnel that money to the county so they can run a number of different programs for the subset of the population. Obviously there's policing and general code enforcement that happens here. The critical infrastructure ordinance and the shopping cart ordinances were things that the city councils passed and present had advocated for and have been done. And then ultimately every year we do contract with someone locally to cut a safety fire line around this encampment site. Next slide, please. So ultimately, we're very well aware that there is a cleanup required up on on this encampment right now at the moment. But ultimately the things that are limiting our ability to rectify this are quite frankly, the weather and just the soil in and of itself. It's too wet at this moment. The police chief is working with Public Works to develop what this plan would look like, and I'll let him come up and discuss this further. You know, we are advocating at this point that we think we kind of need to move people off the site because we've cleaned around folks. And so ultimately we think there's a benefit to maybe having people move to a different location. Having us come in with a little bit more heavy equipment and do a cleanup that doesn't require so much hand labor from our public works department and do a very deep cleanup of the site before having people move back to this site ultimately. But I'm going to have the police chief come up at this point and kind of guide us through where we're at with that plan.
Thank you, Chief.
I get two. Chief Gilman, Wairika Police Department. So the hill's getting atrocious. If you look at your pictures you have up there, the first picture was taken about approximately 13 months ago with our drone. You can see there's probably 12 camps up there and it's fairly clean. I don't have screenshots for public. I'm sorry. You can look at the pictures if you want. Since then, if you go to the next picture, you can see what it looks like as a couple of weeks ago, 13 months apart. Is completely full of trash, flammable, rotten items, syringes, narcotics. It's not even safe to even work or walk up there. City crew, I can't have cleaning this by hand. So I've been working on a plan with the city manager to use heavy equipment to come in and clean it out to get the top soil out and get this down to where it's safe, at least can be habitable. To do that, I'm going to have to move the tents. So we're working on a plan of putting it together to move the tents. We're going to just go for compliance. We've done several cleanups in the city and we've always got compliance with everyone. We actually only had one person ever resist us. They understand why we're cleaning and what we're doing. So it's usually not a big deal. I went through the aerial photos and counted as best I could up there on the hill. And what might be a surprise to everyone is there's probably less than 30 people up there. Everyone thinks we have hundreds of people. That's because it's trash for an acre. But there's only 18 tents. Most of those are empty. Most of them are abandoned. Some are covered in trash, but I could only count 18 tents. There's probably 20 somewhat people up there. We know them. They're cooperative with us. I walk the hill all the time and talk to them. Some of them aren't even locals. They just came here for some of the benefits. A girl I talked to the other day is just here because of that. And was trying to get her bus ride out of town. So before I go too far off topic, so my whole plan is just to get this cleaned out to the ground. To do that, I have to move people. I have to listen to our city attorney who has been a wealth of information for me because this is a very touchy subject. Half the people yell at me for trying to move a homeless, the other half of me yelling me for not, not homeless. And it's, I'm, I'm just stuck in the middle every single day of my life. That's all I talk about is homeless people at work and off work. So I put a plan together. Being law enforcement, I'm mission oriented, so I kind of made a bullet point plan. But basically what we're going to do is give plenty of notification. We're going to take photos of every site we mark so we don't miss anybody. I don't want someone to get missed and say they weren't given notice that they had to move on a certain date. We'll give them plenty of time to get moved up to, I think it's five days. We're going to give them and we're going to check on them basically every day. I want to make sure everyone knows why we're doing it, get full compliance with everyone. And then on the fifth day, our goal is to go up with heavy equipment. So no one gets injured on the city by needle. We've had people actually grab needles. So we'll come up with the equipment and the goal is to clean out that entire hillside. So it looks more like the first picture you saw on there. Then when it's done, I, I would hope the shelter would be open by then and they don't have to ever go back on the hill. I was a supporter of the hill when it started. It was my recommendation of the city. So I take full responsibility. I was the first one to bring it up to put them up there. But you can see in the first picture, it was fine. It was 10 tents and it was fine. And they were off the streets of Wairika and everything looked clean. In the last 10 months, it's, I don't know what happened. If you look at the last picture of your packet, that is a close up of one camp. That is just one campsite with one tent. And you can see everything on there is plastic bags full of trash, rotten food, narcotics, flammable items, propane tanks for heat and cooking. They have tons of propane tanks. That's just one campsite. You can see the tent in the middle. We noticed today, there's not even a walkway into the tent. They have to crawl over the trash to get into the tent. I searched the whole area, could not find a walkway into that tent. So the plan's in place. I've discussed it with the city manager. We worked hard on it. City attorney's reviewing it. I want to make sure we do everything right. And I want to just let you all go and let the public know that that's where I'm headed. I would like to get that hill cleaned up. And if they can go somewhere else afterward, that would be awesome. If they have to come back, at least maybe they can come back with some terms or requirements. So I'm open to any questions. Mine's very brief. The city manager basically stated everything we needed to state. That's all I have unless you have questions.
I actually got.
Thank you, Chief. I'm sure they have questions. I'll go to council first and then public comment. Okay. Council Baker?
So Chief Gilman, when you give the notice for people to move, do, does the city have to provide any kind of area for people to store their property? And what's your plan for that?
Yes. So we have an area where we store, like I said, we arrest somebody that has a camp that we have to move. We did it today. We bring a pickup out, we load their property, we take it somewhere to store. When we move them like this, we have other organizations, city manager and I are going to work on it tomorrow with Councilmember Keg. And we try to get other organizations to help us. They are a huge help with the homeless up on the hill. They provide a lot of services for them. I think it's an easy ask for them to come help move tents and everything. Most of this is garbage. When you walk up there, there's not. Most of this is garbage. When you walk up there, there's not very much personal property left. Um, but we do assist with that. We do everything we can to help them. We've normally done uh pick and pull cleanups. And so it hasn't been too big a deal. Most people will leave, take their tent and we just go allow. But what we're trying to do this time is an entire cleanup. So it'll be a little bit more in depth as far as moving property. We might have to move tents and stuff. But I have two pickups at the office, city crews got pickups, you know, I, I, we're going to work with everyone we can work with and make that happen.
Thank you. And then I just want to make sure that I heard you correctly that um you say there's approximately thirty? People that are occupying the, that area?
Couple of days ago and looked around. I came and looked at the aerial photos, counted the tents, looked for the active tents. Figured approximately two people per tent for active tent. Some are one, some are could be four. I would estimate less than thirty people. My walk, when I talked to the girl a couple of days ago that was trying to build a fire at COS. I don't think I saw ten people that were walking around. Granted, it's daytime, but so I think it's a fair estimate state. We're talking less than thirty people.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll call for public comment in a minute. We'll call you down.
So, yeah. Couple of things, um, between the two, we have, we like said, it's any type of threshold on what that means of the ground needs to dry out. What, you know, what degree do we need to have this conversation of when that, I know we're going to get approval from the city attorney, obviously. But is there some type of criteria that we're going to say if, you know, if it dried out for two weeks, then we should be adequate at that point in time or?
That's up, that's up to ban at the city yard. If you can get a heavy equipment up there, we can do it. If you can't, we'll postpone.
Okay, because I know, because I know the rest of us council will be getting uh lots of phone calls and conjunction, win, win, win. So I'm just trying to hit them off of the pass on what that means on timeframe wise. I know obviously we've been way too wet up there. It's been a kind of a mess up there and that's why it's been delayed unfortunately. And the only time, other opportunity we've had is when it freezes up real solid. Um, and that's the only other opportunity, but.
I put the plan several weeks in advance. I'd love to do it today, but for the weather reason. I want to be able to keep an eye on the weather, make sure we can get equipment up there without damage and anything. And we should know more than enough time for you guys to know. We'll look at the weather report and if there's no rain coming for a week, we might just say this is the week we're doing it and go.
I just want to add some more to that, just in, in general that uh obviously this is going to be an ongoing problem. And I think the, the council needs to, I think we need to bring this back on the next agenda to discuss um what this means. Um, not only for uh law enforcement and for the city staff, it's, I think it's a. Uh, we need to have a certain amount of account accountability. Accountability is one of those things that we got to look at as. You know, we say accountability for the homeless individuals on cleaning up their mess. Okay, yes, that's accountability. We do need to have that accountability to make sure that our town is kept clean, safe, um drug free as much as possible. Accountability, we also need to look at as a city's, um, city council and city staff. We need to, we need to be held accountable as, as far as council on, on setting guidelines for law enforcement, for city staff. To where they know when they could go clean this thing up as far as issues and stuff like that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry to inter- in- interject here, but I just wanted to um kind of point out and maybe have the city attorney weigh in on like. I'm not sure if he was able to hear at the start of the meeting, wanting to move this into some level of discussion. Since it's not currently on the agenda in that fashion and so um I'm not sure if this is appropriate to have this back and forth. I know you advocated for it at the start of the meeting, but um it seems like a, a, I don't know, I just want to point that out.
Let me clarify my question on that or what I'm asking the, the council is that we bring it back on a future agenda. I'm not asking for discussion tonight on what, how we need to proceed forward. I'm just asking the council that we bring this back at the next city council meeting. Um, because there's, I think we have a lot of uh decision making as a council and, and to figure out what direction we go. Just like um, um, chief has stated that he's going to, you know, they're going to plan to clean up. That's great and everything, but what does that mean after the fact? When, when those individuals start coming back, what does that mean? Are we just going to let them, let the individuals just do whatever they want to? Or are we going to have some um discussion on how, what that means, what the campsites mean, what does the hill mean? What does that look like? So there's a lot of things that we can bring back as far as discussion. I can bring a lot of information on what other cities are doing. Um, and that, um, I know that there'll be some debates from our attorney on some of my, my opinions, but I know that other cities are doing it. And it's, it's been um very legal on that, on that aspect. So I would like to bring that back and have further discussion. I want the council to state um what direction we need to. Um, send our, our law enforcement, send our city staff on. Because we can just keep doing what we're doing and we can keep hearing from the citizens on how messy the hill is. How dan- how dangerous the hill is, how dangerous our streets are and all this is on this. But it comes down to us as a city council giving direction to our law enforcement, our city manager. On what we want to see as a city. Do we want to keep our city clean? We want to keep our city safe? Absolutely. I mean, nobody in here will say that they don't want that, but that we, they need direction. They need some type of supervision and direction of what our, the council wants, what direction we want on that and what the citizens want. And obviously the citizens want this problem to be resolved some shape or form. We're never going to fix the problem, or at least us as a small city, we're not going to fix this problem. But we can, uh, with the direction of the, of the council, we can direct the police chief and the city staff. To help keep this a lot better, cleaner situation, safer situation. There's a lot more that we can do. Um, that they just, they need our direction. So that's why I want to bring this back. Um, and I, I just, I'd say, I'd hope that the rest of council want to bring it back at this next city council meeting that we are planning. And I can bring back a ton of information. I can work with the city attorney on different things that other cities are doing. And, but I, I, I do want the, see the approval of the rest of council to bring this back. Because I think we need direction for, it's only fair, it's only fair to give um our staff and our city direction of some sort. Instead of letting them try to figure it out, like what just happened, what, what's going to happen. Our chief of police had to spend a bunch of his time trying to research this out, research this, all these situations out. When we as a council can give him the direction that we want as a city council, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman K. All right, so um. Oh, Councilman Gray.
I, I would respectfully ask that we not do it at the next meeting, but do it, skip a meeting and do it at the following meeting. And then I would respectfully ask all of us, we, this is going to come before the Supreme Court. And I'm sure that we're going to have the US Supreme Court. Um, we've already got a, a ruling that's coming in on criminalizing homelessness in California. Which hasn't been happening before and I, I don't want to discuss, I don't want to, I'll keep it short. But we, I would think we will probably have a ruling in the US Supreme Court before they go on. I think they go on the, on recess in June, don't they, uh, Attorney Jared?
That's correct.
So, I mean, so all I'm asking for is I'm in agreement with you, but I would like to skip one meeting so that we have a, we get a few other things done. And then gives everybody a chance to think about what's our, what's our part in this as a council and how can we help our staff? Yeah, if that's, would be okay.
No, I, I honestly, I think I, you have my blessing on that. I, I agree. I would, I would encourage the council to do some of their own research. Just surfing the internet is, there's a plethora of information, not all internet sources are true, so don't always take that at uh, at face value. But um I would encourage the council to do their own homework and what they want to see. What they want to see is as, as a city, what do you, what do you want? What do you want a certain area? Do you want, you know, we went through this, I went through this, I live this. So I'm asking the rest of the council to weigh in on what they want. I think most of council knows what I want. Um, I've been a huge person on trying to fix this problem as best I can. And I want the rest of council to be as, as much involved as they can, so I, I agree.
Can I make a comment on that though? Just so we don't get, uh, I'm still with the city attorney can help me out more. But I don't plan on doing anything outside of what we can do. I'm trying to stay well within the rights. I just want to move some people, do a cleanup like I've been doing. And then if the city chooses to move them back, that's fine. I'm not trying to reinvent anything. I am well aware of the decisions and so I'm trying to keep the city from getting sued and protect the home.
I'm sorry, Chief, yeah, no, you absolutely, is definitely in total legal bounds on everything that I've studied and researched. That he is definitely in all his legal um aspects of doing everything legally. Um, as long as we do the, um, give them notice. Um, and we have a reason. You, you can't just go kicking people out for no reason. That's a lot of people don't understand and think, oh, this person's hanging out here, sorry. You can't just kick them out for no reason. You have to have some type of reason behind it. So as obviously this is a health and safety issue, is the reason why we're doing cleanup on that. And that falls in that as guidelines. So there's, we need, like I said, we need to know what that next step is though. And that they need to know what that next step is uh as far as law enforcement, so we can fix that. The other thing is just recently, I think a lot of you have seen that, that Medford just actually won their, their case. And the main reason why Medford won their case um was because they have services. They have a homeless shelter, they have pallet shelters, they've worked diligently on trying to get some of these um services to these individuals. And that's li- literally the only reason why Medford run, won their case is, is because of they have services to offer these individuals. So, but there is other things that we can look at and I'm like said, as long as the council is willing, I will bring back what I can bring back. I have a lot of information, I got piles and piles of information that I can bring back and. Whether the council wants to go with it or not, that's up to them, so thank you, Chief.
Great. Thank you, Councilman K. So just one question for you, Chief Gilman, is uh, is this, is this the actual? This is the actual notice that you provide them?
Well, that's a.
Or is it a, it's a sample?
We do twenty-four hour notices. That's pretty typical of the critical infrastructure. I've actually sent that to the city attorney, so that may not be the final version.
Okay, okay.
Him sign off and then have you all sign off on the notice.
Okay, I just want to clarify that, okay. So just kind of an idea. Okay. All right, so any other questions or concerns? So I think the request is for this to come back, um. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, sort of public, yeah. And then I'll come back and see if the council wishes to bring this back. All right, uh, come on for a public comment question. Oh. Oh, coming down to the microphone, please. I know. I thought, I, I, I thought it was Andrew for a minute. I was like, yeah. It wasn't.
If, if it's actually, if it is, if it is possible, I'm sorry to interject here, I just, I'm not sure if Mr. Jared caught kind of your desire at the start of the meeting. To change the format of the meeting. And so if you don't mind engaging him at this moment to kind of discuss that change that you advocated for.
Well, certainly, no, I, I completely, I was uh, um, doing, I was aware of all of that. That's, that's fine. It's, um, the public has the right to speak on anything on the agenda. Um, you've just simply moved when they can talk on that item. Typically it's done um at the beginning under general public comment. Um, and Councilmember Keg brought that up and was wondering if the, the council wanted to do it then or do it now? Um, after um the things that have been said. Um, this item wa- is not been agendized for any action to be given. I think direction has been provided. Um, the item was, um, did have enough sufficiency um as it was agendized. Um, that it was clear that the homeless issue would be discussed um by um, um, Mr. Ledbetter. And so that has been done. It would be appropriate to go now with public comment.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jared.
But again, I'm, also, it's not um a back and forth public comment. Um, right, at thi- at this point, um, receive the public comment and then any additional direction should be given at that time.
Okay, great, thank you.
Go ahead.
Yep, yep.
Chief Gellman, I'm Dominic Favaro, lifetime resident of Wairika. You'll probably laugh when you consider my question, but is there a possibility that our guests could clean up their own mess? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Regarding.
My name's Luther Finley. I'm a member of the uh, Wairika Semperdamas Church. And uh Tuesday afternoons, a small group of us gets together and we uh make meals. And uh, we don't have them come to our church because we have a school on the campus also. But we go out and uh we find them around Walmart and uh Goodwill and um along the creeks. And uh over by grocery outlet and my little territory is uh Cross from Behavior Health. So I have a dinner bill that I take and I ring and so they'll come down the hill so I don't have to go up in the hill, you know, so it's safer there. And uh, we take, um, we have water, we have uh socks, uh, we find gloves and sleeping bags and coats. And uh, we also have um garbage bags. And they really like the garbage bags because they don't, you know, to buy a pack of garbage bags is expensive, you know, just to get a few of them. And a lot of them, they don't like the big mess up there. I think with the weather conditions that we've had with the wind and everything, you know, it's uh. It's been difficult for them. Um, one thing that I'd be concerned about is, you know, cleaning up their camp is. You know, if there'd be some transitional camping for them or something. And um, I just, um. From nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety, I was a meth addict and it's not by the grace of God that I would uh be dead. Or be up there with them, you know, so when I look at them, you know, they're, you know, my heart goes out to them, you know, uh, there's. Um, many different stories as people are out there and probably Chief Gilman's uh assessment of about thirty people out there. Is pretty, pretty close because tonight when we was out there, we had uh forty meals that we delivered to the hill. And uh some of them, we gave them multiple meals because they're so hungry, you know, um, I know. I don't know, it's a, it's a difficult thing and um I just, um, they're human beings and they deserve, you know, our. Our love, respect, so that's my, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you.
Marie Archie, um homelessness is ugly. We all see how ugly it is. But you don't see just how ugly it is for the person to be homeless. I've been there, I've been homeless. It's ugly. They don't choose this, no matter what anyone has told you. You know, there's a girl up there, twenty-nine years old, walked away from her two beautiful children. At her home, which I fought hard for her to get, to choose drugs. And she is so far gone that she cannot help herself. She's stuck. And she needs a hand up because the officer will not let me chloroform her and duct tape her for a couple of years. He would clean her up, but I'm not allowed to do that. So we need to help these people get off that hill and to get someplace that's actually really good for them. Which would be the low barrier shelter. Hopefully it will open soon. And until then, that place up there is ugly. We see how ugly it is. But think about these human beings. It's ugly for them too.
Thank you, Don Marie.
Marizalov, Wairika citizen. Uh, many of the fine citizens of Wairika take their trash, their household trash up.
take their trash, their household trash up there and dump it in the dumpster. They dump old mattresses there because they're too lazy to take it to the transfer station. Uh, there were, there was a medical exam table there for weeks. The homeless didn't break net there. Somebody dumped it. If we could have a, uh, surveillance camera to check this out, to see who's dumping things there illegally. Also, there's, there's people up there vandalizing, not homeless people. Good citizens of Waireka go up there and vandalize the porta potties. They go up there and scream at the homeless people, throw bottles at them. Don't blame the homeless for all of this when it's your fellow citizens doing a lot of it.
Thank you, Lorenzo. You need a public comment? All right. I will close public comment and, um, I'll just come back and, um, confirm direction that was requested by Councilman Keg, but I think he said at the next meeting, but I believe is February. I mean, I'm sorry, I'll be March 5th, correct?
That's what I have, Mr. Mayor, March 5th. But can I just get, uh, one more clarification? I'm sorry.
You sure can. What am I going to tell you now?
Is it the wishes to talk about homelessness and generality, or is it the wishes to talk about an encampment cleanup? Uh, how do you want this agendized?
I believe that Councilman Keg was, um, and he can speak for himself, but I think he was um, talking about moving forward and like rule if, when, if some of them do go back to that encampment after their move for the cleanup. The rules that, um, are allowable, um, for them to stay up there, um, and moving forward as far as guidelines goes, is that correct? And I'll let him speak of what he, because he's asking for that to come back. I'll, um, let him speak.
So, yeah, culmination, yeah, that I would like, actually like to, um, engage the council on if this is the location that the council would, does actually want them to go back to, for one thing. Because if we're going to clean up the, clean up the hill, then I want, I want, because the whole council to decide on if that's what they want. Um, the individuals to be allowed to go back up to there, or if there's another location that they would rather see them go to or something. As of this point, um, the previous council is the one that, that decided on the hill. So that's why I would like this council to decide if that is, because, um, as of right now, what we've discussed is that, um, you know, with the, with the current cases and court cases, I should say, that we do need to allow them to go someplace. But I want the council to, to, um, state whether they want them to even go to a certain place. Cause we can, there's other legal things that we can talk about at that point in time on, um, if they want, the council wants them to go there or someplace else, or if they just want to do what some other cities are doing. I can bring that back as far as, um, some other cities are only allowing overnight camping. So there is some other legal things that can be looked at. And I want to, I will, like I said, I want the council to make that decision.
So I guess he's just asking for correction, what you want on the agenda item to come back.
So I guess it's, it's a little bit broader, I guess. Um, I'm not sure how to word it. I could, um, if you don't mind, I can work with Mr. Ledbetter on the verbiage of that, if that's okay with Mr. Ledbetter.
Yeah, that's okay with me. I have no problem doing that. I just want to make sure that we're giving you what the, what the direction is so that you're able to discuss it. The way that you would like to.
Yeah, I, I think it's, as long as you're okay with it, I'll have, you know, I can have that discussion, but it will be, um, brought back as far as a, a kind of a general discussion, but also location discussion. And, um, my point of view on what is legal and what isn't on that too, as long as the council is okay with that. And then I will obviously want the attorney to weigh in on all that too. But I will present the council on a lot of different, uh, other court cases and a lot of what other cities are doing to help rectify this issue. So.
All right. Okay. So you'll get with him on how we're going to word it. So it could be discussed on for March 5th. All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Okay.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, I just have, because it is kind of, it just was an odd way that it ended up getting on here. But I do have another comment that has nothing to do with this. As far as staff reports go, if anybody is interested, they had to move the Lola date, obviously. And that now is falling tomorrow. So, um, just, this is just a general reminder. That's where Sage, that's the meeting for Sage, which our mayor is currently, I believe, the chair of, where some decisions get made on people getting placed on certain commissions. So just as a reminder, uh, the city of Weed is hosting the Lola meeting tomorrow evening.
Thanks for the reminder. Yes. Okay. So we'll move on to item number 12. This is the mayor, council member reports, statements and requests. AB 1234 conference and meeting report, verbal of any in accordance to the, with AB 1234. Council members shall make a brief report and file a written report of any meeting, event, conference attended at city expense. Members of the council may make brief announcements, reports, or requests staff to report, uh, the council on any matter. As soon as it may be, sorry. All right. Okay. I'll go to, um, Councilman Davis. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Well, I went to the mayor's and council member academy in Monterey. And
Thank you.
First bill was for new mayors and new councilmen. So I gave you my address and I gave you more and I was and so it, it was really quite an eye-opener that the people that presented. The ladies from SCORE that was here, they were just like her and they were knowledgeable and they talked. Right alone for a couple hours. People on there, they're really, um, very, very qualified. The good, there's a couple of good things about it. I got a harassment prevention certificate. And a, um, another ethics certificate. That are required by the state of California. And one of them is what we're doing here. That was one of the certificates that I um, and then the other thing I was thinking was, it turns out, uh, the politician running through the office, it talks about campaign contributions. Deficitism. Quite a few of the things that I, I kind of didn't think about and they're all involved. Also talked about the brown act. Brown act's big. Like, you know, I didn't know about the brown act. It's a bit, it's really big. And almost half of these sessions, I don't know if you've ever discussed about um, the harassment one. Harassment prevention was pretty interesting. A lot of the things that we do is in broke. You know, people put your arm around Asian secretary because he's your friend. That's pretty broken. All the jobs, you know, and that's just a little thing. But, you know, this color jokes and all these things. That's high. And then there's, then they also talked about, um, all these new players involved in the communication. They talk pretty clean without just talking communication with the youth, other than if you're still, you know, sliding out or part of it. Facebook. You don't want to present something that gives a dialogue. I know you were instructed to get some information earlier out on Facebook. You have to kind of be careful with that. And that's the brown act. That we don't get a dialogue between two or three of us on that particular page to produce dialogue from that. And there's things like that. In cases of community, Facebook is another one. And all they do business and they do social. So it's easy to do it. Anyway, the
Cool.
Um, they fed me. And I just want you to know that it was a couple of buffet breakfasts and they sit down lunch.
Nice.
It's, it's a quirky act. And some of you were scared with the go and didn't go. That's too bad because you really enjoy it. But it's not a new member, a new mayor. Presentation is the laws in California are changing so rapidly that they're taking, one guy in there, I said, that is terrible. And they're weird. And so, you know, so my recommendation, obvious is to consider this. And, you know, you're going to have to really work on that. Go get airfare. I was very fortunate. I had to be in Sacramento and drive down to Monterey.
Great.
Um, is there any questions about that? Now, again, the item kind of, uh, pretty self-explanatory. There's a lot of findings. Think that's enough.
Thank you.
Um, I have one other thing. I was bothered. I think this is the kind of talk about. When we tabled the item about using the name of the shooter. Medical merit one. I made a motion. And it goes to reconvene on that item. There are five of us to talk about it, including McCoy. Somehow that motion got changed to a meeting the next meeting. Well, five of us did not too. Matter of fact, only three of us. Calling it out alone. So I, I don't really know what happened to that particular item. But I think we should revisit it, the five of us. Same one might come out one way or the other.
Are we allowed to talk about that? If it's not on the agenda?
I, I don't know. I mean, I just defer to the city attorney.
Yeah. Are we allowed to talk about that? Because he's talking about a, something that's not on the agenda.
What he's talking about is the
He's talking about
the motion and he's making a, a comment.
Yeah, just
So if we were to get into a further discussion of any item, the details of it, that would be improper. But I don't think he's overstepped the bounds yet.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Just dissatisfaction is what he's talking about. Okay. He said you can talk about your dissatisfaction of it, but you're not going into details about the votes or the, or the subject matter, I think.
Well.
Cause the vote was, the votes have been made on that. That ship sailed. It passed.
Alternatively voted, it passed.
It took two. There was three people here. That was the majority that evening.
We can't five.
Do you want to explain, Mr. Jared, to, um, Councilman Davis? We can't stop a meeting. You guys missed your meeting. Understandable. You had, um, circumstances where you guys missed it. I understand that wholeheartedly.
I object to that. Just wanted you to know that. Because the left called me the night out and we were gone.
I understand that.
And the reason we tabled it was sort of mystery boy could be involved as well as the rest of us. That's not the way the motion came out. That's what we tabled.
Well, you asked for that. It was tabled, but as far as my position goes, that we have a business to run. It does not take five people to sit here and run a city. Well, that's what I'm saying. There are three people here running a business.
I'm not going to get in contested
Well, no, if you're just asking for discussion, that was just answering your question. Okay. All right. Well, thank you for that. You have every right to be, if you wanted to, but that's why we got to show up sometimes. Councilman K?
Oh, um, yeah, I don't have much to add tonight, other than I got, we have, we have a meeting tomorrow or COC meeting. So if anybody wants to, to come to that. Um, there's actually, there'll be some pretty good information going out there. Um, next. Uh, that's it. Excuse me. I'll tell you when the COC meeting is tomorrow, 1:30 at Behavioral Health, the Red Oak Room. It'll go till three, three o'clock prompt. And Monday, next Monday at, huh?
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Mon- Monday, we have our, um, uh, meeting for, um, services for, we're actually, um, geez, I can't even spit it out. A resource fair, my goodness, that we're going to do a meeting next Monday. And that is at one o'clock at the, um, Old Goodwill, which is project base camp on Main Street there.
What was that?
Monday. That's the resource.
Oh, okay. The fair.
It's a resource fair. So I just thought that everybody, anybody that wants to be involved is fine. And, um, we've got a lot of people that are actually interested in this resource fair. I want people to understand it's not just to give handouts for the homeless, but it's also actually to try to get them on some resources through, Behavioral Health will be there. So they're going to be offering their services, try to get some of these individuals off the streets and stuff. So it'll be actually, um, very good for them. Sometimes, yeah, there will be handouts for these individuals, but those, those handouts were to entice them into getting services, hopefully. So, um, other than that, um, I think we're just going to leave it at that. And thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Baker?
Uh, thank you. I'll just start out, um, by saying that I was not able to be at our last regular city council meeting because of a life altering family emergency. And I just want to echo, uh, Mr. Davis's comments that I was just disappointed that the cannabis issues were not held over for all five of us to discuss. But that is what it is. I just want to share those feelings. I, um, attended a C2C meeting on January 23rd. And, uh, that's always a, a great time to catch up with other, uh, from people, uh, who sit on other city councils throughout the, the state, throughout, I'm sorry, throughout the county. Um, in addition to that, um, I had turned, attended the SCORE training, um, that was provided to us last Thursday. It was a great training. Um, it was on communication and it really, the training really stressed the, um, style of communicating, uh, with a city manager and city staff. And my big takeaway was that it's not appropriate for city council members to, uh, discuss things with city to discuss things with city staff without going through the city manager, so. I hope that I always do that.
You absolutely do, Councilmember Baker.
And then one of the other takeaways that I got from, from this was that we all have different communication styles and that it's important to honor those communication styles. We don't all think the same. We don't all communicate the same. And that was just a really good reminder for me. And having said that, I have a couple of requests. I really would like to see more local SCORE training for us. So I don't know how we can make that happen, but I'd like to see it. Actually, I'd like to see it quarterly. I don't know if that's realistically realistic, but at least a couple of times a year. And I would like to see us open it up to other city councils in, in the county. Excuse me, just a minute.
If you don't mind, I have a comment on that, if you're okay. Yeah, this was the first time we had advocated that, that SCORE get involved in some of this training because the Cal Cities trainings were filling up so quickly and it just seems like something. So this was the first time and we'll gauge, we'll go back to them and see how successful they thought it was. We had invited one other city, unfortunately, nobody did attend, but they did move on. We thought they were going to do more of a regional meeting, that was our impression, but apparently, I believe, and I think Cindy and Rheta may attest to this, they went to Etna the very next day, was my understanding, but we, we agree with you. We think that that's the, the insurance consortium is a great opportunity for us to get a ton of training. So we will take that feedback and try to get not only that training, you know, more regularly occurring, but more trainings ultimately with council and staff, so.
Thank you. A couple of other things. A few weeks ago, I had mentioned the desire to maybe have our state assembly person come and give us a briefing. And I know that you had reached out to Megan Dolly's office. And I believe that, as I understand it, they were willing to, she was willing to send up a representative to meet with us, but not necessarily to address the council as a whole. And I'm just wondering what the status of that is.
Yeah, absolutely. Alice Bennett, I believe, is the folk, the person that we engaged from Ms. Dally's office. And yeah, there was, the engagement request went in and ultimately she did kind of come back to us with, I think, that that they would like to possibly engage you individually, instead of coming to the meetings and, and see what they can work on for Waireca with you guys individually. But they weren't ready to make any commitments, but I think we're ready now. They wanted to wait really until after the holidays and so we're there. So I will definitely make a note, reach back out to her.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And the last thing that I have is that with the city considering a local measure, placing a local measure on the ballot, I really would like to have our city attorney just brief the council on the legalities are, of our involvement with campaigning regarding any local measure, so that we're all on the, the same field.
Yeah, he, you know, we did have a, a meeting earlier today and obviously Mr. Jared could chime in here. That's a fabulous idea. I think that that can be a part of an individual item. It could be hypothetically a part of the multiple meetings that we want to have concerning fire. We did have kind of a discussion today about ballot language in general, but I think Mr. Jared probably will chime in, but that's a wonderful idea.
Yeah, I can cer- I can certainly brief the council whenever you'd like on, on those issues. I think it might be appropriate or most appropriate when this item next comes back.
Thank you. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Um, trying to remember what's happened the last couple of weeks. So yeah, the SCORE treaty was great. I think, I think I had it when I first started, started, we had something similar, but she was great. I it's always good to get a refresher regarding any education or any course and, yeah, it was, yeah, she was going to Etna right after this, so I was surprised they didn't coordinate where they would come and sit here with us. And because she was trying to figure out how she got over to the Scott Valley because she'd never been over here before, so. But it was great. It's always great to get a reminder of procedural stuff, so I enjoyed the class. Trying to think what else we if I had any other meetings or not. I don't think so. So it's getting late, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting and wish everybody a good evening and see you next time.